Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board Meeting of Monday, February 12. My name's Carl Schultz. I'm the vice chair. I'll be running the meeting tonight. Mr. King, our chair is here, but his voice has left him incapacitated. So I will take his guidance from dirty looks and such and keep things moving along. We'll start with a roll call. Starting to my left, Mr. King, can you make a noise?
Here.
Mr. Baptiste?
Yeah.
Gleason?
Here.
Mr. Corbett?
Here.
Do we have Ms. Quirk on Zoom? Ms. Quirk, can you weigh in?
Yeah, I'm here.
Thank you. And acting Chair Schultz is here. Preliminary business, the first item on the business is businesses endorsement of a Mylar. We previously approved this sub, this is a subdivision, right? Yeah. So we had previously approved it. The 20-day appeal process has passed, so we're just going to sign, sign the official paperwork. We'll move on. We have a discussion of Serpent, but I'm going to reorder. Mr. Bertola, do you want to come forward? Going to take 1523 Sarajon Realty LLC out of order. If you could introduce yourself.
Good evening, Brad Bertola with J.C. Engineering.
Good evening and welcome. I believe you have requested a continuance.
I have, I have.
We'll get to that in one second. Just so, for the record, I believe you submitted updated plans, revised documents, all of which has been posted according to Sonya and is available for review.
That's what I was told. I haven't checked, but I'm assuming.
So for the members of the community, updated plans are available as of today. So let's move on to your continuance. We have a request for continuance. Just want to speak to that and then we'll, we'll act.
Yes. Just looking at your current agenda, it appears you have a fairly full agenda for February 26th.
Could you bring your calendar?
So we would request a continuance to March 11th if that space is available.
We'll let Mr. King take a look at the calendar.
Yep, March 11th is wide open.
Okay. So I'm open to a motion to continue 1523 Sarajon Realty LLC special permit for cluster development forms, site plan review, hidden trails off County Road till March 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corbett, second by Mr. Baptiste. All in favor? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste? Aye. Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. So we'll see you on the 11th.
All right, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, no problem.
I'm not going to even ask. It's a big deal, right?
I am not permitted to vote on this. If I were, I would have voted aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherri. I explained to Jane that I didn't want to kick the hornet's nest, so I did not ask for your vote. The next item going back on the agenda is a discussion of Serpent hour allocation, working with Serpent. Sherri, do you want to speak to that item?
Yes, I will. I just wanted to talk a little bit about an effort that is going to be underway with hours that are now available as hours that are essentially free to the town of Wareham. You all may know that due to our relationship with Serpent, each year we have a certain number of hours that are allocated to the planning board for projects that the planning board determines to undertake. It's 20 hours, and then the town also has another 20 hours available to it. And you all further know really well, better than I actually, that over the last several years, the planning board has been endeavoring to do some work on its bylaws and get them in better shape, more consistent, more easily understood, sort of reflecting better and more coherent policy. We've gotten into a situation where over the years, I think, with a number of rewrites and, you know, different pieces coming in at different times, you know, it's a little bit of a jumble at this point of, you know, what a set of zoning bylaws should be. And so I think what we're going to be able to do with Alan Slaven's help in getting Serpent on board to do this, and with Carl's help in fleshing out, you know, what a plan of work could be for this, we're going to be in a position where we can, you know, develop a good outline of what needs to be done and sort of a path forward. And from there, seek some help in the form of grants to get us the rest of the way through designing a good set of bylaws. And, you know, this is, you know, due largely to the efforts of, again, Alan Slaven, Carl, and Ken Buckland, who all, you know, participated in putting a proposal in front of Serpent and gaining their permission. And I think we may actually even be able to go up to the full 40 hours, although there will be some competition from other projects, I think, for, for other hours. But I think this is really good news for the planning board and is one person who's labored, again, not as much as others, on the zoning bylaws. It's really good to have help and especially to be in a position to potentially get some grant money to do a really, really good job on. When anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
I would like to opine that it seems like it makes sense to put that budget toward the bylaws pretty heavily. I don't know what the competition might be from other issues, but the bylaw seems like a good place to put that resource, because I think if we have a good bylaw or an improved bylaw in place, it will be helpful to us for what might be other issues.
I agree.
And with Serpent involved, where they operate across so many different towns, a fresh set of eyes and some input on how different towns handle the bylaws, they might bring some, some fresh ideas.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So just, just to summarize though, I think what we're asking Serpent to do is do an audit of the bylaws, point out all of the deficiencies that we've been finding and conflicts and such as we find in action, as well as bring their experience, and then, and then help us write a grant application. Because their, their advice is it's more than 40 hours' work to rewrite the bylaws.
Absolutely. I 100% agree with that. And I, I think that doing an audit, as you suggest, is probably a really good idea as a starting, a springboard.
Right.
And I think that while we've chipped away at bits and pieces of it, I think that it's, it's high time for a really holistic view of the whole, of, you know, the bylaw. It just, it...
Well, and the reality is...
It just needs to be looked at as a cohesive document.
And the reality is, we're not going to get all 40 hours. There's, there's other entities in town that are going to want some of that time.
But even if, even if we did, 40 hours is not enough to complete the project.
Having been through a zoning or a zoning bylaw rewrite before, I will absolutely agree with that statement, that it will take a lot more than 40 hours, even for a professional.
Great. Is Mr. Buckland on, John? Through myself, the chair. To, Mr. Buckland, Ken, I do believe we discussed last week, you have gotten a notice from the Attorney General asking for an extension for the review of the changes we made in the fall. Is that correct?
That's correct. The Attorney General approved some of the, of the articles that had gone through town meeting in the fall, but did not approve any of the zoning articles, saying that there were too many of them to address in, in the time that was available, and wanted more time to review them.
So again, we're going into the wind of an extended review of the bylaw changes that we're trying to make. So the bylaws that were enacted at Fall Town Meeting are still pending. And there were some significant updates to solar and battery and site plan. But we're going to, we're going to talk about that in a minute. Anything else on the Serpent? Okay, thank you. So moving forward then, the next item on the agenda is the rules and regulations, which has, we have an open public hearing on the rules and regulations. This has been open since October. We met two weeks ago and reviewed the, the latest draft. We sent Mr. Buckland off to fix some typos. And Mr. Buckland, you also added a couple of comments from Mr. Rowland, Rowley, is that correct?
No, I did not add the comments from Mr. Rowley.
Oh, okay. So that, that will, another update that we'll need to, we'll need to do if appropriate. So let's open the discussion. We have a copy in front of you. I did send a copy out of the draft. I don't know if Sonya has posted the updates yet. So open for, I did go through a walkthrough. Nothing structurally has changed from the walkthrough we did last week. So right now, we're in the midst of cleanup and taking citizens' comment. So discussion from the board.
It looks like the last revision posted was 117. Does that make sense, the timeline?
Yes, except Ken's typos were corrected after that. Sherri, do you have anything you wanted to add? Sherri worked extensively with, with us on this.
Only two things that I saw that I took note of, neither, both of which I thought were perfectly fine. One is on the Design Review Committee. I think, Ken, you changed the designation of one member from being, you know, essentially a neighbor to, you know, a, you know, a citizen of the town. And just wanted to hear from you a little bit about that, although I thought I could imagine why that, that would be an improvement. I wanted to hear your reasoning on it.
Well, I think the, the idea of having a neighbor means that you're appointing an individual each time for each project that comes along, which lacks consistency in the, in the reviews. I think it's appropriate that somebody is picked as a resident of the community and is a permanent or an appointed member of that Design Review Board for the term that they are appointed.
Okay. That, I can see your reasoning there. The, the other thing was, in the section that deals with permission for site plan review, you made an addition saying that, that a site plan review cannot, essentially for a use as of right, a site plan review cannot be denied. And I wanted to hear your reasoning on that, although I believe that may be a correct statement of the law, and that may be why you, why you included it.
That's right. That's the state, the case law that applies to site plan reviews, that for as of right, you can't deny it based on a site plan review.
Yes, you can condition it, but you cannot deny it.
That's correct.
Okay. That's all that I saw. I don't, I didn't really see anything else that, that struck me.
Is there anything that, is there any mechanism in place where conditions can't, are, don't exist that can solve an issue with a site plan? So...
I don't understand what you're saying.
Ken's saying that you can't deny site, through site plan review.
And as of right use, the, for site plan, yes. But you also legally can't condition it out of existence either.
Yeah, you can't be punitive.
Okay.
But I'm not sure that either of those got to your question.
Not entirely, but... And with regard to Sherri's comment about the neighbor versus a town resident being on the Design Review Committee, I wonder if there's a...
It wasn't a neighbor, it was, it was a neighbor of the project, so it was a rotating member.
Right, so it would have to rotate. But I wonder if there's a...
It's got to be a town resident regardless.
Right, so that the committee stays consistent. But I, I wonder if there's a way, a communication route that could be mapped out to this resident for the, the person who would be a neighbor of a project? That's really a clear route to communication.
I'm, okay.
So that, because tech, I guess...
This would probably occur before a notice went out, because the application isn't complete yet.
Right, but you would want that resident or, you know, town resident to hear and maybe represent the people who would be the neighbors. And so...
I'm not arguing that point yet. I would say notice, notice isn't going to serve, because notice won't have gone out yet.
Right. So I just wonder if there's a way that that could be set up so that there is representation of the neighbors and that they feel like their voice is being heard in the manner that having a neighbor beyond the committee would do.
That's a good point. I'm not sure the answer to that.
I don't have an answer.
And I'm not sure, we, we put that in the rules and regulations, but that's, as we know in the past, very large projects, like the downtown revitalization, for example, that, that may not be a perfect example, but communications meetings occur, education meetings occur. So perhaps the charter of the, the review board could be that if the, if the project should be of that magnitude and impact, that that should be part of, of their outreach process. So there's, it's a good thought, so the, the, the board could, as part of their normal process, reach out to neighbors and say, hey, look, next week, next Tuesday, we're far enough along where we think we could share something and we'd like to hear your input.
And I'm only suggesting that it be the, the person who's a resident on that committee, just because of the way the conversation started here, and, you know, neighbor versus resident. And so maybe it's not something that should be the onus of that resident member of the committee.
Right, but rather a standing practice for the review board.
Right, for the whole group, and that, you know, there may be, be a file of, of resident letters, the way we do on a project, that those be kept as part of the, the file for the project.
Okay. It's a good thought. Do we, do you want to further add to the rules and regulations, or do you?
Maybe, and I'm not sure exactly how, but it just, it occurred to me that that might make sense.
Okay. Sam?
I think there's one option you have is in process that you're talking about, to have an advertisement of some type, of some type, that tells people that the, the application is before the Design Review Board, and that their comments can be received by the Design Review Board to, and will be considered in that Design Review Process.
And it seems that it should probably be not just written comments, but let them know the time and place of the meetings, so that they can be present and offer them in person.
That's right. That could be part of the notice.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it seems that the Design Review Process is one that should include the, the people who are going to be impacted. And it shouldn't be a, a conversation that happens kind of in a vacuum.
No, I'm...
Yeah, no, I'm just doing it for you, because you're the chair.
Thank you.
So anyway, just...
Any other, any other comments from the board? Sherri, anything from you? You're muted.
I think that Jane is making a good point, and some kind of process for soliciting and incorporating a neighbor, neighbor reaction and concerns would be a good part of the Design Review Process.
Yeah, I do think that neighborhood participation actually happens in that regard oftentimes when we're doing the, the site plan review, and maybe if it happens...
And that would, that would not preclude that.
No, it wouldn't preclude it, but it might, it might abbreviate it a bit, that if people are getting their voice out there earlier, that that might be help. First of all, I think it might make their, their concerns be fruitfully responded to better than having it happen during the process the way we do now, so...
Great. Are there, this is a public hearing, so are there any citizens' comments? Welcome.
Thank you. Nancy McHale, Farring Hill Road. Just trying to understand how this, the new rules and regs will interplay with the current planning board review of a project. And at one point this evening, a comment was made that you can't condition a project out of existence. So I just wonder how that interplays with denying a project versus putting conditions on a project? And how do we work to have good projects in town and negate the bad projects that are sometimes proliferating?
So just if I might clarify, the comments you're referring to refer specifically and only to site plan review, which is an area that is not covered specifically in state law, and is, but I believe, as Mr. Buckland pointed out, case law has pretty much established you can't deny a site plan review. So it's not possible to deny a site plan review, because it's just a review.
So the, the place where, where denial can actually happen is with special permits?
With a special permit.
So site plan review happens with an as-of-right use?
And also occurs with special permits. So we have bonded...
Right. But the, but in that instance, the ability to deny would land on the special permit, but not on the site plan review?
So if you think of site plan review, think of the words, it's a review. There's nothing to approve or deny, but you can condition it. And I was being, trying to be clear, that you can't be so onerous in your conditions as to, to, that would be adjudicated in a court at that point, I believe, but I think you would know it if you saw it, kind of one of those things.
Okay. Well, and you might find that the conditions could be deemed by a proponent to be deal breaking, and not be felt to be that way by the board, and that's when you'd end up in a...
With a court, with a court.
With a court issue.
Okay. So the, these rules and regulations, they will be applied to both site plan review and special permit?
These are, the, the way they're written, there are sections for both, but they're pretty much very similar. And there are also rules and regulations for subdivisions, which is a separate document. So, yes, so they, they would be applied. This is a procedural document to allow business to proceed. It also is intended to let applicants know what they have to do in order to come before the board. It's trying to streamline and improve the process.
It also would serve to allow the citizens to know what's coming down the pike at them or with them, or to be able to fuller, more fully understand what, what the process is as well.
Yes.
Because it's not until it shows up as a, as an article in the local newspaper that people find out that things are happening. So I applaud you for, for taking the steps, but the point of having the citizens and the neighbors notified early on in the process is a good one. It will hopefully mitigate some of the ire and get us some better projects. But thanks for explaining to everyone who might be listening the difference between the site plan review and the special permit and not being able to condition it out of existence. Thanks.
Any other questions? John, anybody in the field?
No.
Is Mr. Rowley on? Oh, okay. Mr. Rowley did submit comments by paper, so we'll consider those comments in our review. So are we prepared to take action tonight, or what do we want to do at this point? So the, just so you know, the process for approving rules and regulations as a, as it differs from a zoning bylaw is this is a procedural undertaking by the board, has to occur with public hearing. We would take a vote to adopt or amend rules and regulations as time goes on, and then it gets posted to the clerk to become effective.
Is there anything that we are anticipating coming down the pike in the very short-term future that this would affect?
It would affect all...
I believe so.
I'm sorry, Ken, what did you say?
There are a few projects that are, that are out there that are going to come through the, the special permit and the site plan review process. I think the planning board will see a couple of them, at least anyway, and the Joint Board of Appeals will see a few of them as well. But you're going to get a couple in the, in the near term, I think.
Right. And the problem we have is these were written to, to coexist with the changes to the bylaws. They're not required to be in together, but I think not having them in place, the longer we don't have something in place, the, the more difficult our job might be. And the other comment I want to make is the, some other things we're trying to improve here is the inspection process and notification and tracking on inspections, which has been an area of concern for the board in the past.
I think, I think it makes sense to get them in place. The nice thing about the rules and regs is they're, they're amendable.
I was just going to say, the beauty of these being rules and regs is that we could, we could make amendments at the next meeting.
Right.
But we could vote this in place tonight.
Right.
And still do the amendments next session.
No, not, not exactly. If we were, if we were going to amend it, we'd have to open a new public hearing.
Yeah.
Fine, but we could do it.
Oh, yes.
We could just, we don't have to wait till, for town meeting.
No. Other than needing to have a public hearing, you're correct.
I mean, that's, that's pretty much the reasoning behind doing this as rules and regs, so that we can, we can spin on a dime, we can, we can...
It allows the board to be more nimble.
Act and react more quickly and readily.
Spin on a 50-cent piece.
Okay. Okay. A silver dollar. So, yeah, I think it might make sense to.
Ken, is there any, anything you see in here that we shouldn't enact tonight? Or you, you see a reason for waiting? I'd like to get it in place before you, as a gift for your retirement.
The only thing I would ask or raise a question about is, and in no way would I want to diminish on anything related to the happiness of Ken's retirement, because God knows he's earned it. But do we want to put something in here now on the point that Jane has raised about early, early solicitation of input from, from neighbors? Or do we want to, I think we could say that is an authority or an ability that a design review board can assume and pursue when it believes that it's fruitful to do so. And, or we could decide to act on it at a later point.
I, I think it would, personally, I think it would be a mistake to hold up the entire document for one small edit.
I'm thinking so too, particularly with Ken's forecast of some things coming in, in the near term.
Let's get it in place. And I think, I think adding a neighboring resident to a project for input is a great idea, but let's, let's get the, the dam plugged first.
Yeah, so.
What about Charlie's comments? I mean, he's, he's been out for 50 years.
Yeah.
I think we ought to at least look at his comments.
Well, we could take those, obviously, take those into account too.
Okay.
I think his comments should be added in. I would recommend you include his comments.
Yeah, now, now the entire document has to be rewritten, so we're putting it off another two weeks minimum.
It's not a, it's not a rewrite. It's, it's just.
As I remember, right, Charlie's comments were fairly extensive.
No, they, they weren't that extensive. Some of them were just questions on timing. I had hoped to have them in this document, but apparently we didn't get that done. All right.
So we.
We have to continue the public hearing.
So I have one typographical, it's.
Okay, so if we send the typo, and we'll get the typos. Scrivener errors, I believe, are exempt from public hearing, but.
Well, it was a choice of words, except where otherwise provided. I would say it would be clearer to say except where otherwise specified.
All right, so just send that and we'll, we'll make that change. And Ken, you have Charlie's comments if we could get them added. I didn't think they were that substantial to the edits.
No, they're not. That's why they're easy to put in.
Okay, all right.
If that was in, I'd be happy.
Fine, let's, let's get a motion to continue to the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
I can continue to the 26th.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have it. We do, I'm sorry, I missed it completely. Would you be okay if you weren't here?
I would be. I'm happy with the substance of.
I, I forgot completely. I'm not sure if I'll be here the 26th either, but. All right, so can we make a motion to continue to the 26th?
We got it.
Did you get your motion?
No, we had a.
In addition to, sorry for the interruption, in addition to including Charlie's comments, will the resident versus neighbor be included as well in this final document?
If we've got two weeks, yes.
Okay, that seems like a good inclusion.
If it was tonight, no. If it's two weeks, yes.
Okay, perfect.
It seems to me.
It already, this version already says resident.
Okay.
So the only clarification would be.
But the notification.
If you can come up with some language.
I will work on it.
Thank you. Okay.
All right.
We look forward to that happening. Thank you.
Continue to the 26th.
So moved.
Hearing a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 And the chair votes aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
Not a big deal, but when you do the votes, if you could say the names of the people who are voting, I know that would help the minute taker identify the votes.
We have a new minute taker, by the way, now too. Sherri was able to find somebody for us. Thank you very much, Sherri.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the, the vote was unanimous. All members of the board voted yes, so in this case.
There's no differentiation.
There's no differentiation.
In this case, in this case, no, but it's, it's good practice to go over the people's names and allow her to be able to record those votes.
Yes. I'm going to jump ahead on the agenda while we're talking about rules and regulations. Under other business, we do need to set a public hearing for updates to the subdivision rules and regulations. Mr. Corbett and I and Mr. Rowley worked diligently for a couple of years on those, and they have been sitting and languishing the approval. They incorporate the MS4 updates. There's some other updates. Mr. Cordero has updated the cross-sections for the streets. You did get those cross-sections, right, Ken?
Yeah, we got the details and the, and the cross-sections.
Okay, but we need to post that public hearing, so we need, we can't, we will not be, we don't have time to post it for the 26th, do we?
No, not really.
All right, so I would like a motion to set the public hearing for reviewing the subdivision rules and regulations for March 11th. You have time for that one, right?
Yeah, right now, we only.
We should.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. King, seconded by Mr. Corbett. All in favor? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste? Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we will try and post a public hearing for the subdivision, for the updates to the subdivision rules and regulations for March 11th. Okay, the last remaining business is really business around the Baypoint Windward Pines.
Carl, before we get into this, I, I've got a cough and attack coming. Can I take two minutes?
Sure. A two-minute break.
Does she have a doctor in the house?
Dennis, why don't you, you can come up. Mr. Cordero, is Mr. Cordero on Zoom, John? Unfortunately, he's not here.
Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons why Phil Cordero may not be here is because we don't have money left in the 53G account for Baypoint, and it needs to be replenished.
All right, Ken, good. That didn't actually come up last week. That's an important, Mr. Welsh, could you note that for?
Yep.
Because there's some actions that Mr. Cordero needs to take, and we need to have funds.
Okay. Didn't, didn't Mr. Fay say that he, he had funded that?
He absolutely said that, which is why it didn't make it into my notes. I thought it was a closed, closed off, so we'll, we'll bring it, let's wait.
I checked, I checked the account though, and what we have is we have 2,800 in the, in the account. We have $3,009 worth of obligations. So we're already below the.
Right.
Bound.
Let's, let's read that into the record in a minute when, when Mr. King is back. I'm looking for my notes here.
He's back.
Yeah, no, I see. I'm just, I'm still trying to blame him while I can't find my notes. Nothing is ever easy.
What are you trying to find?
My notes from meeting last week. I printed them, but they didn't print out, so I don't have a copy. I'm looking to read my, look, find my email. Got to be right here. All right, I'm going to do it from memory. On Thursday the 8th, it was February 8th, right? Mr. King, myself, Mr. Buckland, Mr. Bowen, met with Mr. Welch and Mr. Fay of the Baypoint Project to discuss open issues regarding the bonds and surety associated with the three phases of the project. And we came up with an action plan, which I did email to all of you. And we'd like to discuss that this evening. Mr. Welsh, if you can introduce yourself.
Dennis Welsh with Stone Street Court.
Great. So we, we had agreed last week that we would review the status of those sureties with the board and move forward to take action. Before moving forward, Mr. King, you were out of the room. Mr. Buckland informed us that the 53G account is overextended. So notwithstanding the fact that Mr. Fay had provided additional funds, as he stated at the meeting last week, I think Ken says the obligations now exceed funds available. So, Mr. Welsh, if you would let Tim know that we're going to.
Yeah, he'll refund it.
Yeah. All right, so we have three phases of the project. We've established, I don't know, the action items that we need to do to close out or bring each of those phases forward. With respect to Phase 1, we have a punch list that exists. We agreed that Mr. Cordero would meet with Mr. Welch and turn that punch list into a schedule, well, review what actually, there's some items on that list that, that the applicant says have been completed. But Mr. Cordero will meet with Mr. Welch, will come up with a schedule of values, and that schedule of values will have a value associated with that. And the applicant will then create a bond or of some sort of surety to cover that value. One of the issues that was a problem was that the prior surety for Phase 1 expired, lapsed, and there is no surety in place at this time. So this will then move, will put a surety in place and allow us to move forward on closing out Phase 1. There are a couple of administrative items. The, the original covenant for this phase was never rescinded by the board, so we need to take action on that. Mr. Buckland, do we have an updated Form F so that we can take action on releasing that covenant?
We, we have a standard, a standard Form F.
So, okay, if, if the board, we could, we could release that, that covenant was replaced by the tripartite agreement. So I think it's a procedural item. The chair recommends that the board release that covenant so we clear up the paperwork. We can do that tonight. Doesn't change our position in any way. It's a paperwork item. Any discussion?
At this point, the covenant has no value anyway.
Right. It's a, other than the being on the record in the land court, it's just hanging out there. We should, we should clean it up. That's, that's the chair, well, the vice chair's recommendation at this point.
Are we sure that money for Phase 1 is, is gone?
Yes.
Yes.
We're positive.
Yeah.
We're positive. The bank said, there's a, was a series of changes in the banks. They no longer have any record account. There's no, that money is not there. How it got released, that, that's a different issue. We don't know how that happened.
We're positive. All right.
There was due diligence done by counsel and others.
The, the bond doesn't reply to the covenant in any, either case, but.
Okay. I'm good.
But yes, the, that money is gone.
A conversation I had with Tori Bowen not too long ago, he was sending a letter to a bank that bought the prior bank, which he stated the bank bought liabilities as well as money that was there. And he said he was sending a letter to that bank, so we've heard back.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good, then.
Somewhere along the line, a procedural error allowed those funds to be released. Nobody knows by who or how, but they're no longer.
All right, okay.
We are no longer.
I'm glad, finally.
Yeah, with respect to the bank buying the liability, Mr. Fay retired the loan, so there was no liability to be acquired, even though, and that bond should have, it got.
I'm happy to see it go away.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion that we rescind using the standard Form F, the bond, excuse me, the covenant for Phase 1, which was dated in 2017. Ken, do you have the exact date? I can't find my notes, unfortunately. But that's, we're talking about a 2017 bond that was replaced by the tripartite agreement, and we're just trying to clear up the paperwork.
It'd be nice to have that date.
Ken, do you have the date? I can't, my email is inadequate to me tonight.
I'm looking for it.
Sheila sent the draft Form F for the document.
It's not listed in the notes.
If that's important, then we can't do it tonight.
It'd be better to clear it up if he needed it, but if it doesn't exist.
No, we, I know the date. I just can't tell it to you right now. I have, I have the actual copy of the original covenant. I just can't lay my hands on it.
Okay. So your motion?
I'm looking for a motion that we release the covenant for Phase 1.
So moved.
Second.
So Mr. Corbett moved, moved the motion. Mr. King seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. King votes aye. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett votes aye, and the chair votes aye. Mr. Buckland, if you will prepare the Form F with the page and book reference, we can get that signed.
Does that need to be recorded?
It has to be recorded, so one of the. By the applicant. The applicant that was in the action plan, you don't happen to have the action plan I sent out in front of you? I'll find it.
It looks like it was the 27th day of November 2017.
Right, it was 2017, so.
November 17th, November 27th, 2017.
Do we need a motion to include that, or is that good?
I've signed the record, so I think we're.
Okay, good.
All right, so Mr. Buckland needs to, to record that?
No, I'll record it.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You need to record, and then we need a copy certified back
Yep.
into, into the clerk and to Mr. Buckland.
Yep.
Okay, so the next related cleanup item for Phase 1 is we established a tripartite agreement in April of 2018, I believe. It was a two-year agreement. The two, the agreement lapsed, was never renewed. The loan was retired, the bond was released. So we have a tripartite agreement that was never released by the board, that is again, not in effect. Do you have the date of that agreement, Mr. Buckland? I'm looking in my notes.
Do you need the notes?
I've got them.
Okay.
It's, it's, they're, I didn't record in my notes. I have to go back in the history. Anyway, I'm looking for a motion that we release that document. Is, again, no longer in effect. The bond doesn't exist. This is merely cleanup.
Cleanup of the record.
Of the record.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Corbett, seconded by Mr. King. All in favor? Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Corbett?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. So I'm not sure the form of paperwork to release that, that can-
Uh, that can be a, a, a form of a memo.
Okay, so if, if you will prepare the memo, Mr. Welch will file that with Land Court or the Plymouth Registry of Deeds. We'll get a copy of that back, and every, Mr. K, Mr. Fay's records will be updated, the Land Court will be updated, and our records with respect to Phase 1 will be updated.
So these both get recorded with the?
Plymouth Regis, because they were originally recorded with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds. They're recorded on a book and page. We have all those reference numbers. We just need to get them cleaned up. That's just cleaning up the old paperwork. Okay. Regarding Phase 1, and as we stated earlier, once Mr. Fay refunds the 53G account, Mr. Cordero had a punch list, which he sent out in November of open items. We reviewed that punch list on the 8th. Some of those items have been completed, some remain open. Mr. Cordero will meet with Mr. Welch, will come up with a schedule of values, and Mr. Fay will prepare a bond. He'll send the form of the bond to Mr. Bowen, who will approve the bond as to form. The, the Planning Board cannot approve the bond. What we can do is accept the form and value of the bond and recommend that it be forwarded to the Selectmen for action. So when that comes in, when, when we have the schedule of values, when Mr. Bowen, excuse me, when Mr. Fay has provided the bond to Mr. Bowen, then we can vote, take action to recommend that the Select Board accept the bond, and we'll be able to establish and have a surety in place for Phase 1.
Can we set up a, a date certain for when that's gonna be handled by?
Well-
That was my question, Michael.
Well, originally, the plan was for Phil to meet with Dennis this week, but now we're, we're struggling with the 53G account. The goal was to have that all done, have the schedule of values and the bond done before the end of the month. That was an agree-
Could that be put into the record?
Yeah, but I, I think there should be a, a date certain.
Absolutely.
So if, if something came up that prevented Phil from meeting, I get it, things happen. But let's fast forward to say the end of March. By the end of March, this has to be resolved. No exceptions. Because that's the, that, that's the only one reservation I have is we're, we're asking for X, Y, and Z, but we're not saying when X, Y, and Z need to be completed.
Can I be clear? What will be complete? All the work, or just the bond?
No, no, the, the-
The surety will be in place.
Right, Phil's review, the item list, the values, and the surety in place by the end of March.
And, and-
I couldn't agree more.
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
That's, we want that, you want it way sooner, we want it way sooner, but by the end, so we've set a date certain.
I imagine you're supposed to be meeting a fellow from Phil's office this week, depending on the-
Well, sooner will obviously be a bonus.
Right, all right. So rather than saying the end of March, the last Planning Board meeting in March is what?
Yeah, it is the 25th.
Okay, so by the 25th of March, we need to have-
The surety in place.
Surety, we can, one of the Planning Board meetings ahead of that, but we need to take a vote to recommend that-
Yep.
To get the surety to the, okay. Just a couple of notes. You and Tim on Thursday last talked about the bond, bounds. So just make sure the bounds are in place. I don't, I sent a note to Phil to remind him to make sure. I don't remember if that was on the punch list or not.
It was.
The bounds need to be done. And the bounds for all phases need to be done. For each of the, I don't know if they're in the schedule of values for Phase 2 and Phase 3 or not. So just as an action for yours, can you make sure the bounds are listed? And Mike, you had a thing you wanted to not forget. You brought it up to me.
Oh, um, thank you. So in, in, Mike, keep me honest if I'm not remembering correctly, but in previous public hearings on this project-
Oh, I know what it was. Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's an, an exit out the backside of the property that goes through Wynwood Pines. That, what's that?
Cahoon Street.
Cahoon Street.
Right, the backside, yeah.
The, the, the discussion and the final agreement was that there was gonna be a fire access gate there.
There is.
Is it there? Because I've been told otherwise.
It's not in yet.
Yeah, okay, but that, that discussion was held two years ago.
So can we make sure that's on the list you review with Phil and get cleared off?
Yeah.
I actually met with the fire department out there, because they wanted, they wanted a specific gate, which, which is on order.
Okay, can, can we have?
That'll be on the punch list and the schedule of values then.
Right, exactly. Perfect, yep. All right, good, thank you.
Perfect. We're just trying to close everything off.
Housekeeping.
Housekeeping. And if we can get Phase 1 done, that would be great. I think the citizens will be happy. Anything, I don't think we talked about anything else on Phase 1.
No.
Okay. Let's talk about the easy one, which is Phase 3. We have a schedule of values from Mr. Cordero from November 20th of 2023. The applicant agrees the schedule of values is appropriate. Did you say something, Ken?
No, I just coughed. I was getting Mike's cough, I guess.
It's $44,000-
And change.
And change. Mr. Buckland, I believe Mr. Fay sent a form of bond to Mr. Attorney Bowen for review on Friday?
He sent the surety company that he's gonna use for the bond, and Rich Bowen, Town Council approved that surety company.
Okay, but we didn't send the bond over, right? So we don't have anything to vote on yet? Or do we have something we can vote on and refer to the-
We can vote on the amount and the, and the, the surety company that they, he's proposed.
So can we, where we don't have the bond in hand, just a company, can, can we vote on the fact- And the amount?
And the amount, and refer it, a recommendation to the Select Board who has to act on the bond?
Right.
In any case.
But, I mean, what the applicant's looking for is the ability to release some building permits so that it can continue to move without the bond in hand. I would be hesitant to do that.
Well, he can't do that till the bond is in hand.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page.
Right, okay, so we can, so the actions we can take tonight on Phase 3 would allow Mr. Fay to begin selling, well, he's already selling lots. It's not that he can't sell lots in Phase 3, he can't get building permits.
Correct.
So we agree that once the bond was established in the value of $44,000, how much, Ken, do you have the number?
375.
$44,375. And accepted by the Select Board, he would be able to get building permits for Phase 3, and then we would have the bond in place. So we need to vote to accept the surety company and the bond in the amount of $44,000-
375.
375.
To replace, to establish the surety. To rel, and then we would have to release the covenant. So I, looking for a motion to accept the surety in the form of a bond for $44,375. A motion to accept that and recommend, forward the recommendation to the Select Board for action. And that would establish a surety for Phase 3. Discussion?
So, all right, just to be clear, so we recommend that this form of surety is acceptable.
Yes.
It's forwarded to the Select Board for approval.
Yes.
Once the, once the bond's in place and approved by the Select Board, then at that point, the project can start obtaining building permits.
Then at that point, we have to decide, we have to release the covenant. So until we release the covenant, he can't get, he can't get building permits, so we have-
So we're looking at one more meeting.
Well, or we could take the vote tonight, a contingent vote. Or we, or at the next meeting, we could really say. The idea, I believe, was that Mr. Bowen would bring this forward at the Select Board meeting next week, which means our meeting on the 26th, the, the bond should be in place, we can release the covenant, and Phase 3 should, should be ready to move forward.
So the motion would be to accept the surety company and the bond amount, recommend that it go to the Select Board, recommend that we make, I mean, recommend that we release the covenant based on the approval of the Select Board on the surety.
At our next meeting.
At, at, right, and then at that point, once those things have happened, then building permits would be available.
Correct. That's, I, that's, that's what I understand the process to be, correct, Ken?
That's correct.
Okay, so we need a motion for, to accept the bond for $44,375 to align with the schedule of values prepared by Mr. Cordero and move that recommendation to the Select Board for action.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. King made the motion, Mr. Corbett seconded, all in favor, Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
No.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Do you wanna have any discussion or?
Well, the history of the project, if we get a, a, a document in hand, I wouldn't go for it. This, this thing's been a dragon on for a long time. We've been promises, promise that. I wanna see a piece of paper in hand first.
Well, we haven't released anything yet. All we're doing is getting the bond in place.
Till we, till we see a bond on the table. Because otherwise, we're gonna release the covenant, and we got nothing.
We're not, we're not releasing the covenant tonight.
That, that happens after-
That will be-
After the bond.
But a piece of paper in hand.
I'm not sure I understand, but okay.
He wants to see the tangible document in hand, not just discussion about a tangible document.
If, if we don't recommend, okay, I'm just trying to work through. If we don't recommend that this go to the Select Board, we'll never have the bond.
We'll never get the document, correct?
This is the recommendation to the Board of Selectmen to-
That, that, we, we approve the amount, and we approve the form of surety. And it, so it doesn't, it doesn't authorize anything in the way of releases. It just says, yeah, we're okay with the amount, yeah, we're okay with the bond that they're putting forward.
We no, we no longer can approve the bond. That, that got changed somewhere along the way.
And we'll hold back on the release of the covenant?
We won't, we'll vote on the release of the covenant-
At the next meeting.
If, if the Select Board has accepted the bond.
Right, so we just gotta get past accepting the bond.
So it's coming back to us?
To really, we, as long as we haven't released the covenant, you should not be able to get building permits.
You're saying it's the release of covenant that is required to get the building permit?
Right, because the covenant says-
And we're not releasing the covenant right now?
Not tonight.
Not tonight.
Okay, as long as we're all on the same page. Okay, so we had, Mr. Baptiste voted nay.
I'm gonna stick with yea.
Okay, Mr. Corbett?
I can't agree with Mike. This, this is a years of discussion.
Stranger things have happened over the years, Kyle.
Oh, I, I'm-
I'll go with the sample, it's on Phase 1.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not-
Something got lost in the, in the translation or in the, I see something in, in the face. You know, a man's weird, it's not with anything.
But I'm not sure what that is that you're looking for. We're trying to get that. That's the bond.
Well, it's, it's no big deal. If you got a bond, show us the receipt that you have one.
Well, he can't, he can't-
You have an agreement.
He can't get that till the Select Board votes on it. The Select Board won't vote on it-
Until we recommend it.
Until we recommend it.
I wanna put a cog in that wheel so it doesn't move till we get what we want, which is the document.
So how do, how about if we move it forward to the Select Board recommending that we accept the amount, we accept the type of surety, and then at the point of their approval, if they approve it, then it reverts back to the next Planning Board meeting for a potential vote on releasing the covenant. Now it's back in our hands. Nobody can-
That is, that is the process right now that I-
So it is definitely coming back here. It has to, to be released.
Yes.
I share his concerns.
You agree that, Mr. Welsh, that without releasing the covenant, you can't get building permits. Mr. Turner should not-
Yeah, I can't, I can't get a building permit unless you people release the covenant.
And we can't release the covenant until we govern, yeah, covenant until we get a surety.
And the Board of Selectmen can't approve this surety?
Right, we're not allowed to approve the surety anymore. So it's a necessary step-
Okay, so-
That still protects us.
All right, I, we're all, okay, Mike voted no, that's okay.
Yep.
Mr. Corbett?
It's coming back, for sure.
That's the plan.
All right. Well, no, I don't-
I can't do, other than say, that's the plan, I can't, till we get till the next meeting. I can't tell you whether it got you or not. We have to rely on Mr. Buckland, Mr. Bowen, to- I'm not trying to-
It's, it's on the agenda for the Select Board tomorrow.
So it can definitely be on our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Yes, I'll go for it.
Okay.
Hesitantly.
I, I understand everybody's objection, but that's why we're trying to very procedurally work through this. That's why Mr. Welch showed up tonight, to make sure he understands the board's concerns. So, Mr. Corbett votes yes. The Chair votes yes. So, Mr. Buckland, you could let Mr. Bowen know that we've forwarded this for action to the Select Board.
All right, I'll do.
And then make sure for our agenda for the 26th that we have action on the Form F covenant for Phase 3?
Release of covenant, yes.
And just as a side note, Dennis, I know you were gonna submit the requests for the building permit.
Right.
Have they been submitted?
Not yet, no.
Okay. Okay, great.
And, and, I, he, the building inspector really can't do anything anyways until-
You, you just were trying to-
Yeah.
Assuage-
Yeah, my end of things is all set, and I just hit a button and it goes.
You're ready to go, okay. All right, so, and then, Ken, you'll keep Mr. Turner abreast of what we're doing here, and we'll make sure that Mike's concerns that we don't get building permits without releasing the covenant, he's on board with that.
He is on board with that already, yes.
Perfect. That, that satisfied what we were trying to agree to last week for Phase 3, correct?
Yep.
That will, that will get the pressure off of Tim from the bank. All right, Phase 2 is a little more complicated. And it's unfortunate that Mr. Cordero's not here tonight. It's only more complicated in the sense that we do have a schedule of values for 800, well, we, we are holding $1 million. Dollar-
I think it's 1.2, isn't it?
Yeah, I was gonna say 1 million. We are currently holding surety of $1 million plus for Phase 2. A schedule of values was prepared almost a year ago, looking for an update. The schedule of values has been in place for a long time. There was a request for release of $841,000 last June. Mr. Cordero has been working with Mr. Welch and others. We have a recommendation from Mr. Cordero to release $841,000.
Has the number changed since?
I thought it was 804.
803, 803, 296.
I'm, excuse me, please, I'm talking in round numbers at the moment.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
So, do, somebody wanna read off the numbers from my minute?
803, 296.
Okay. Okay, we, we would release 803,000...
296.
$296 of surety, of the held surety, leaving, what was my math?
Uh...
I printed this before I left.
221543.
So that would leave 221,543 dollars. Mr. Fay would like to replace the tripartite agreement with a bond, which we would go through the same process to replace the tripartite agreement with the bond. The only issue with that release was, we had requested the applicant, there was some work that may, that was done, may have been done, that Mr. Cudaro was unable to inspect. There was some debate about whether it had been inspected or not been inspected, it should have been, should it have been inspected? In any case, that, that is the current sticking point, is that the applicant cannot provide the, the language that Mr. Cudaro was looking for, so we've reached out to Mr. Rowley, Mr. King has spoken with Mr. Rowley, we need to get, we need to find out what wasn't inspected, and what the risk is for releasing the bond, excuse me, releasing the, the funds, and we need to take action on it. And to that end, Charlie and Phil, we had suggested that Ken facilitate a discussion between Charlie and Phil, and get a, just get a notice to the board as to what remains uninspected, if anything, because unfortunately, I can't, I can't list here what that, it was a vague comment, but other than that, once we clarify, are our two inspectors satisfied that the inspections are complete, then we would take action to move forward on phase two. At this point, I don't believe, other than my updating you to say, we have a million-plus dollars we're holding, the applicant is looking for a release of 800,000 plus of that, because the work has been completed, that's a normal process, and it would have happened according to a pace, unfortunately, what happened is Charlie left, Allen and Majors came on, there appears to be...
Big gap.
An information gap in there that we're trying to figure out what it is.
Yeah, and Mr. Fay didn't show up for a couple of meetings.
Yes, we, we addressed that, and, which is Mr. Welsh, why Mr. Welsh is here tonight, and understanding the importance of being here.
I think, I think if we get Phil and Charlie together to compare notes, I, I, based on Charlie's input that I read through, it appears that he inspected, of course, we don't have an official inspection report from Charlie, we just have his notes, but it looks like he inspected up to the backfill of the utilities, the drainage, the water, the electric, all of that, and what hasn't been verified is the road base and the blacktop.
And what, what we agreed with the applicant is if, if Phil and Charlie and Dennis can't resolve that using paper, the applicant will do, drill three core holes?
Mm-hmm, that's already set up.
Oh, you're already going to drill the three cores?
Yeah.
I was going to say, we decided at the meeting that it would be a preemptive strike to just go ahead and do it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that should be done this week.
Good, so once we get the core borers...
I think we'll be, we'll be in better place.
We should be able to move forward on phase two, and the plan then with phase two would be, according to normal process, we release the money under the schedule of values, and then the plan from the applicant is to replace the tripartite agreement with a bond, which is a procedural issue.
So we can address that at the...
There's nothing for us to do tonight on phase two, other than keeping everybody informed.
I can't vote no?
We would move on that on the 26th.
Sam, would you like to vote no on something?
After these years, honestly, the borings, I'm, I was going to vote no if that came up, but the borings, that may convince me, after how many years we've been talking about this.
Okay, so, and then...
Who picks the spot?
We, we, we agreed, three bore holes, beginning, middle, end. That's what we said, right, beginning, middle, end.
Important where it's going to go, because, you know, stranger things have happened. I've seen sites that have been around for three or four years, and all of a sudden, they prick. We did a site visit, and it's, glacial till and sand doesn't mix, I mean, it's like, you know, red and white, you can tell the difference, and it passed, couldn't believe it. It passed.
Well, I think a, I think a, a core sample is going to be pretty easy to, to figure out, as far as whether or not they built the road base correctly or not.
Been a long time, I've seen a lot of strange things happen, I'm telling you.
I've been here a short time, I've seen a lot of strange things happen.
Again, what, what we're trying to do, we're trying to do is move the project forward, no one wants to see the project fail.
Oh, we've been on board since day one.
Yeah.
You know, we thought the project was good and this and that, but...
I, I agree with Mike, we've done our part right along.
We went over backwards.
Well, I, I think that message, and I think Dennis can attest to that, that message was put forth loud and clear at the meeting.
Crystal.
That, that the planning board has done more than its share to try to get this over the finish line, and now it was time for, for Stone Street to do their part and carry the weight.
All right, so, to summarize, we released the covenant for phase one, we released the tripartite agreement for phase one, Ken's going to prepare the paperwork, we'll sign it.
I'll record it, yep.
You'll record it. You'll meet with Phil, prepare a schedule of values for phase one.
Yep.
Tim will prepare a bond, we'll keep phase one moving forward. Phase three, the board has voted to recommend that the select board accept the form of surety in the amount of $44,375. Once that happens, it'll come back to us, we'll release the covenant, you can get your building permits.
Come on, Sam.
Phase two, we need to continue to move forward to confirm the schedule of values, and once we've got the core borings, we should be able to do that.
And, and I would again just stress, move the project forward like, you, you know, you're, you're moving toward a lottery check, you know, don't, don't drag feet, don't drag it out, we've seen too much of that already, just take the momentum.
And if one thing's not done properly, my vote is no. We've been working on this for years, we've given him every chance possible, he doesn't show up for meetings that he's called for, and we've gone out of our way for years now, and I just got to make sure you know, one mistake, one thing not done, I'm with Michael, I'm voting no.
Understood. Any other discussion? Mr. Quirk, you've been silent, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out of the discussion.
I think the discussion is being well-handled, and I appreciate what everybody is saying, and I think you're, you're going in a, a good direction, so I have nothing really to add.
Thank you. Mr. Buckland, any closing remarks?
No, I think you've got everything covered at this point.
Dennis, any questions?
Nope.
Concerns?
Nope, I've got my margin.
53G account we need from Tim.
I'll address that tomorrow.
Yeah, and, and, you know, to that end, Ken's been bringing me up to speed on the open 53Gs, and there are, there are 53G accounts in the negative, so I would absolutely not do anything on the part of the town that's going to create that account to go to the negative, it needs to be funded prior to any work on our part.
I've got to give you a chance to vote no. For a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Nope, I have two more ques, two more questions.
Oh.
What, what's the plan on these?
What are these?
The, all the accounts, 53, two and a half pages of...
I think we should put them on the agenda so we can review them, I don't think they're on the...
Yeah, I, I do too.
They're not on the agenda for tonight.
Let's, you want to put them on for the 26th?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
Yeah, because that, the, the negative 53G account is concerning to me.
Yeah, and I had...
Eight or nine of them.
I had some questions about the Minut Avenue property, it was not on the agenda for tonight, I just wanted to bring that up.
Which, which one, where the mining operation is?
Next to the school.
Yeah, that's what he's referring to.
Yeah, and, and it was getting discussed by email, and that was not appropriate, so I thought if we could discuss it in here, then we could bring up the questions, I have a couple of questions, you may have questions.
So, from my two cents, and Mike, you, you were with, you were in both meetings, so that project first became, came before the board, as a single, as a single lot subdivision, and there was, there was questions about clear cutting, because it was over 50,000 square feet, and there was concerns about the need for an archaeological study, because the, the town had to go through a study for the school, and of course, they're right there on the same hill, right?
All right, let's, let's put it on the agenda just so we can discuss, because I'm concerned there's only, there's, there's not three driveways.
Right, it's a singular driveway.
Looks like a subdivision to me.
Right, at which point, they won't be able to, they won't be able to meet the 10, 10-degree incline rule off the street.
Yeah, so anyway, let's, let's, it's not on the agenda, let's put it on the agenda so we can then ask our questions.
Do you want to do the 26th on that one too?
Yes.
All right, so that's, that's going to kind of round out that date, I don't think we're going to have any more room.
Well, we have...
It's on the 26th, I'd like to be part of that conversation.
We, we did, we do have the solar projects from New Leaf, right, on the 26th, on your calendar?
It's going to be a busy night.
No, but it's on your list, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you zoom in from wherever you are?
I'm going to be in transit.
Okay, I may not be here either.
All right, well, I mean, if you're missing and Jane's missing, we should probably reach out to New Leaf, and give them a heads up that there's not going to be a full board, and it might not be in their best interest to appear.
Well, I won't know until, my wife's going in for surgery, so...
I know that I'll be in transit and not able to join.
Yeah, you got two for sure, if somebody falls ill, or whatever, you can't even vote.
We can, we can play that by year when, when it comes up.
I will keep you informed, Mr. King. John?
Mr. Todd Fay, the center, they need to zoom in as they're having to speak.
Well, it's not really a public hearing. Is, is it in regard to Bay Point?
Oh, it seems like a raised hand.
All right, I'll, can you let him in, I'll, let's see what he wants to ask about, we're about to close the meeting.
There, anything on you?
Mr. Fay?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I, I have been watching the meeting, and if it is appropriate, I would like to address a couple of the concerns of Mr. Corbett and Mr. Baptista, and participate in this meeting. If you're about to close the meeting, and my technology ability, it took me this long to figure out how to get into the meeting, then I understand that, I'm not looking to delay the proceedings, but I certainly would like to address Mr. Corbett and Mr. Baptista's comments.
Just one moment before anyone else, I'll, I'll, we'll make a decision. Mr. Fay, before you say anything, I'm going to remind you about your closing remarks at our meeting on Thursday about a sales call. Other than that...
He can only hurt himself by speaking.
Do, do we want to let Mr. Fay?
Honestly.
Do you want to hear?
I'm not sure what he's going to bring to the party, but it's your call.
Do you guys, Mr. Baptiste, would like to address some of your concerns, are you...
I'm listening, go ahead.
All right, anyone have any objections? Just, go ahead, Mr. Fay.
Well, I simply want to state that I have requested accounting for the 53G account, and have never received anything. We were asked two months ago to fund an amount in the 53G account, we funded it, and then this past Thursday, I was asked to make an additional funding, which I certainly will do to close this out. So to make it look like the 53G account has been underfunded or not properly funded, I don't think is an accurate representation.
I, I don't believe, I don't believe that was anybody's intent, uh...
They certainly did not say that.
That, that was never inferred, Tim, that my comment was geared more toward, we have a handful of 53G accounts in the town accounting system that were allowed to go to the negative, and that I didn't want this one to do the same.
And, okay, so duly noted.
Yep.
So it's my understanding from our discussions and emails from Mr. Bowen, that the vote is to accept the bond, subject to approval of the town council meeting, and then, council meeting, there's going to be a subject to receipt of the actual physical bond. It's important to note that I cannot receive a live bond to give you until I have both the approved vote from the planning board, and the approval from the selectmen.
Right.
At that point, we can activate the bond, and it becomes real.
Well, that would happen presumably tomorrow night.
Right, yes, the board vote, the planning board voted tonight to move the, the, the bond to select board, and you have that for phase three.
Right, now, for phase two, it was my understanding that we would be doing the same thing this evening, for the selectmen to act on it tomorrow evening.
Not correct.
Okay.
That was not, I'm sorry, I, that's not the proper way to phrase it. We have to resolve the issue between Tim, Charlie, Dennis, and the core borings, and then we can release...
Right, once we can answer the questions about road base and blacktop...
Right.
Then, then we can move that subject forward.
Well, our whole motion tonight was to get you moving on, on phase three, so that you could begin getting building permits.
Correct.
But yes, we understand the urgency on phase two as well, and we just need to get those core borings, and we'll be ready.
Okay, gentlemen, thank you very, oh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tim.
Entertaining most in the insurance.
One more thing, I know it's unusual.
You started, Sam.
I, I don't know, I have all the details, there's another solar array, 54 acres of Makepeace property, for some reason, it's, it, the state's involved now because of the size and where it is, and there's a meeting Friday morning, 10 o'clock, meeting at Makepeace Village to view the site. It was a press release, I'm going, if anybody's interested, might be interesting.
When is it, Sam?
Friday morning.
Friday morning, 10 o'clock, Makepeace Village.
Yeah, I'll be there.
It's actually, the 10 o'clock is the online meeting, at 2:00 PM is the site visit.
Say that again, Ken?
The 2:00 PM is the site visit, 10 o'clock in the morning is the online meeting.
Thank you very much, I will be there.
I will be out of town.
It's all right, I'll, I'll do double steps, that can account for you.
Baby steps, sir.
Baby steps, yes.
I do need to go back, I have some, I had sent some, Mr., if, we've already raised that, it's not on the agenda, I mean, Ken, what zoning bylaws are going to apply to that project? I didn't, I know you sent an email to me, I haven't read it yet.
The latest, the latest bylaws will apply to it, there's no freeze protection on that.
Okay, I believe our bylaws have a cap on the size of the project that this exceeds.
The newest one does, but that one hasn't been approved by the AG yet, and hasn't been published by the town clerk to start it being enforceable.
I, I thought we put that in the Springtown meeting, I'll go back and look at my notes. All right.
I thought there was a five-bed lot VCE limit on solar projects at this point.
That we had finally gotten approved from the last round.
Mm-hmm.
We should all be clear on that.
Maybe, I may be corrected then, in that case, maybe it was a Springtown meeting that had the, or the previous Falltown meeting that actually had that in, in place.
So all I'm encouraging the board members to do is look at the bylaws for when this comes up, and we'll be prepared for this, because it's not going to be an easy, easy issue.
Not going to be an easy one, yeah.
No.
All right, Sam, lay it on us.
Well, we already have a motion, I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Baptiste, second by Mr. King, what's the official time, Noah?
7:30, 7:30 over.
Okay, because the clock is not right, to adjourn the meeting, it's...
Close enough.
7:30, all in favor?
Aye.
King votes aye.
Aye.
Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Ms. Gleason?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Corbett, aye.
Aye.
Miss?
I can vote on this, aye.
Yay, and the Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dennis.